It is 7:00 PM and I will call our special session of the Town Council Order. All members of the council are here except for Danny Mayer, who is absent. Mr. Moss?
The Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One is convening in our second meeting for today. All the directors are present and the time is 7:01. I would like, Mayor, to thank the council for getting together with us. I think it's gonna be a, almost a historical, hysterical.
Hysterical?
Almost a histor- (laugh) almost a historical meeting.
We're starting on a good foot.
Well, maybe it is hysterical, what the heck. But, anyway, we appreciate that you're joining us and I would like to ask that you be chairman for our meeting tonight.
Well, thank you very much, President Moss. Try to make it hysterical if I can. No, but anyway, it'll be fun. Let the minutes record that that was historical. Okay. Well, in light of that kind of start, just to let everybody know, I, my assignment this morning for civic duty was to read to a hundred, six, seven, six, seven, and eight-year-olds at a reading program. And I was worried all night about gobbling some word that was in a simple book.[94.11][94.11](laugh) So, I understand, it probably is-
You feel better now.
-is there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pronounce something wrong to a, a six-year-old and the six-year-old's gonna correct me and then I'm gonna really feel bad. All right, our first item on the agenda, 2014-1282T, "Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Following Potential Amendments to the amended and restated contract for wholesale water supply and wastewater treatment services and water and wastewater operational services between the town and the district." Item A, an amendment to Section 7.4 Utility Fees of the Contract to Strike the Definition of Utility Fee. And Item B, an amendment to various sections of the contract to provide that district personnel will perform all administrative functions related to management and operations of the town's public water system, or alternatively, an amendment to the interlocal agreement for contractual personnel services between the town and the district to designate additional administrative responsibilities to district personnel. Joint Board and Council would recommend that we try to deal with each item separately, if that's okay with everyone. So, Item A would be the first one. And, um, my notes about this, as I looked back, was that this definition was something that the MUD Attorney, Tony, wanted to have in there. Am I correct or incorrect in that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is that-
He, he did not like the definition that was, um, put in there. It redefined the utility fees. And he wanted to have that definition strike from the, from the agreement. It was not what the, uh, what the utility fees were defined as in the original agreement. It kinda created a new definition of utility fees.
All right, so what you're saying, let me restate that to make sure I understand correctly. The MUD is requesting that we strike that definition because it was not, did not conform to previous definitions.
Correct.
Is that correct? And, uh, council, if you saw, um, I believe Mike's email sometime today, and you may not have, that the town attorney and Mike did check with, uh, the attorney that was involved in the drafting of that agreement and they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no objection to striking that definition. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
All right. So, um, probably the best way to deal with that is that each body should maybe make a motion, consider that, and we record the vote, uh, if we've stated all of that correctly. Does anybody have a question about what's being stated? So, I would entertain a motion from a council member first. If you wish to do so.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Item A of 2014-1282, an amendment to Section 7.4 Utility Fees of the Contract to Strike the Definition of Utility Fee, be stricken from that section.
I have a motion, uh, from Councilmember Payrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Done? All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to strike the definition in 7.4 Utility Fees, please show your hand. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward, uh, for both the MUD and MUD Directors and the council's, uh, benefit, actions taken tonight will be taken back in front of each respective board to amend the, the, uh, actual document appropriately. And, and for the council, we'll just put it on the consent agenda. Okay?
All right, President Moss, turn the meeting over to you.
Do we have a, uh, motion?
Jim, I'd like to make the same motion as previously presented.
Okay, a motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
All right. Item B, an amendment to various sections of the contract to provide that district personnel will perform all administrative functions related to management and operations of the town's public water system, or an amendment to the interlocal agreement for contractual personnel services between the town and the district to designate additional administrative responsibilities to district personnel. This item, uh, probably is being initiated more from the town than anything, is my interpretation. And the town really doesn't have trained or certified people to, um, complete the necessary paperwork as required by TCEQ for our public water system. And so, um, I, one of our options is to make that part, ask for the MUD to complete that for a period of time, uh, because they do have someone certified to do that and are familiar with it. It is double work, uh, at least the figures are the same, but it's more reports. Uh, and so there's options of where that could be documented, uh, either in the agreement we were just referring to for, uh, wholesale water and wastewater services, or in our interlocal agreement for personnel services. So, Mike, do you wanna make any comments about that?
Sure. Uh, in our discussion, excuse me, in our discussion with, uh, Robin Melvin, our, uh, MUD Attorney, uh, we were talking about this particular issue. She has and has since provided me, I just haven't gotten it to you yet, uh, a more broad language in 5.2 of that same document that we just talked about, the, the restated and amended, uh, agreement, that would provide for, uh, all of the administrative functions or reporting in addition to the operational, uh, reports and, and things that the MUD currently files on our behalf. Uh, it would simply be, for all intents and purposes, the MUD would, uh, operate and maintain the PIDS infrastructure, uh, as if it were their own, with the exception of, you know, uh, the town manager having signatory authority for the PIDS, PWS, where Jennifer might have the signatory authority for the MUD's, uh, deal. So, the, for all intents and purposes, they would manage both equally, um, with the exception of having to, having to provide the documents for signature to the town. Uh, they certainly have the, the expertise to do that.
Jennifer, you have any comments?
I'm not sure, I want you to restate that, 'cause I'm not sure. I thought, I mean, that's what we already do. Are you saying not to provide it to the town for signature, or-
Saying, do whatever you do for the MUD.
Without submitting it to the town for signature, or you're saying?
No, uh-
No.
Give me a-
Fill out the reports for the town, provide it to Mike for his signature, not your signature.
Right.
As opposed to just providing data and having somebody on the town's staff take that data and make it into a, whatever the requirement might be. Recently, we went through the, the Water Conservation Report and the Drought Contingency Report, things that are not operationally identified in that agreement. And, and you provided all that data, uh, and we turned around and, and you provided the, your copy of, of the, you know, as a, as a profile for us to use. What I'm, what we're saying is, you guys are the experts in public works, utility systems. Take care of it just as if it were your own, and if it requires a signature from the town, prepare it and bring it forward for signature and, and subsequent council approval.
So, have, had, we've had to do the drought contingency plan and another document since, um, we drafted this new agreement or approved this agreement. How did that get accomplished?
Uh, they provided the data and-
And y'all created the report.
And I took my street superintendent and said, "Make this work."[653.16][653.16](laugh) Make it look like theirs.
Okay.
Uh, but, but I'll take it one step further. Notice of violations, or alleged notices of violations. Obviously, you guys have a relationship with TCEQ and you know who to call and contact and, and visit about. We're learning that process. You know, uh, if it requires the town's approval, take care of it and bring it to us.
All right, sir. Kevin, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I'm getting a little confused, because it seems like we're, we're describing a retail versus a wholesale, you being a wholesale. We've had discussion, this, uh, very discussion a year ago and spent a lot of money in-
Or longer.
Attorney fee, right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we're doing everything and responsible for everything, that's a retail environment. It seems like we're, there's a lot of duplicative services, as in additional, uh, water inspections or water tests that need to be done. We have to do, uh, reports, a number of reports, you know, twice. So, it's, I guess my question is, what was the purpose of the town being wholesale? You know, if we should've just gone retail, leased this, you know, where we could've just leased the, uh, system for the bond link.
I, you want me to answer that?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the prior council, uh, when that, when we were having that discussion, felt it was very important, uh, to preserve the PIDS voice by way of the council. As you're very well aware, the PIDS does not have a voice, the PIDS residents do not have a voice in what the MUD organization does. And the only way they felt that they could maintain at least some semblance of having representation of the PIDS residents would be to maintain that wholesale agreement, so that they could at least espouse the, the, the issues concerning the PIDS residents, because they don't have that voice.
And, just out of curiosity, how many PIDS residents have raised their voice against the service that the MUD-
Oh, I don't know. I mean, I-
Well, ten, twenty, hundred?
I, I have no idea. And, and nobody can tell, predict what the future is either. You know, I, I don't know. But, but it was, that was what was important to the council at the time.
Right. So, um, let's try to direct this back to specifically the services. I, I think where Director Carr's going is that one of the solutions is to change the contract to a different style of contract. Um, and that would be a retail style as opposed to wholesale style. And, um, there're pros and cons, or there're, I don't know that pros and cons is the right word, but there're features of each that surely are different. What is agended is, is really an effort on the part of the town to say, to document, uh, specifically, how do those reports get done? And if we can contract for that service, then we would prefer to do that, uh, because you have knowledge. And, uh, it's an effort to, to say, uh, we are working together to try to be as simple as we can, although it does cause the MUD more work and we acknowledge that. And if, if there was some compensation for that that needed to be made, then I'm not sure if that's not better off putting into the contract for professional services agreement, which it has those kinds of things, or it can surely just become part of, uh, the, um, the wholesale agreement. Any other, uh, i-if we, if we wanted to go down a path to say, "Let's change the style", we could surely do that. It does encompass some other things. Uh, my memory will, will probably not delineate all the items, but, uh, if we changed to a retail style, the town would no longer need its, uh, public water ID, right? And therefore, there would be no reports required. Um, it doesn't necessarily solve the concern that the previous council had, and I don't know about this council, they can state, of some type of, um, elected official responsibility to go back to. We are not talking about wastewater, we're only talking about water in this case. Is that correct?
I would think we'd be talking about both.
Right.
Well, but, public water ID doesn't deal with wastewater, does it?
Their permit, there, there's a, a permit for wastewater and, and a public ID, public work system, PWS number, related to public water.
But, I think Nick is kinda, in a way, yes, you're correct, in that there is only one permit, and that's the wastewater permit. But, the town does have, um, I guess the best word is say-so authority over the collection system within the PIDS. It, only until it becomes part of our system, but overall, we are responsible-
Treat it.
-as the MUD, because we have the one permit related to wastewater. So, you're kinda both right, but I wanna ask a question. If y'all discussed this with Robin, which of the two agreements did she suggest it be in, just curious?
Wholesale.
In the, be in the wholesale agreement? Okay.
You talking about i-if we were to document contracting for the services or-
Right.
Who performs the service? She's saying, "Put it in the wholesale agreement."
Yeah, and in fact, I haven't shared this, I just got it. I, I haven't shared the language. She was working on a very similar situation down on the coast, where a MUD was providing services for a community. I mean, it mirrored our situation. She said, "I've got much broader language in that agreement. Let me show it to you and see if that's what fits." I haven't looked at it and I, obviously, I haven't even forwarded it to you yet, but...
Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I'm trying to grasp what you're, you're saying about the whole, as far as a wholesale contract, the town isn't operating anywhere near what you would, you know, categorize as a wholesale contract. It's more of a retail contract. You want someone else to run it, someone else to be responsible for it, and we have no problem with it. The only thing I hear from you is that the people in the PIDS do not have a voice. To me personally, they're our customers, just like, there's no one on Solana, you know, our customers in Solana, there's no one sitting on this board there. There's no one from Creekmere sitting on this board. You know, I, I think we're in the business of serving people. I think we've done a very good job at it. And to use, the PIDS doesn't have a voice, I, I just don't think it, it holds water, per se. No pun intended.
I had, uh, Philip Schoffner want to speak, and then Jim Moss.
I'd, I'd like to know how much time you think that you would have to commit to this, to do our reports? Or, do you have any idea how much time?
I, no, I really don't know how much time. Um, I mean, for example, on the water conservation and the drought plan, what the part Mike is talking about, there's a, uh, what you call a utility profile, and that is totally separate, because it's a totally separate system, and so you have to look at it totally separate. So, that part of it takes a little more time to, to gather the specific data for the PIDS. But then the rest of the document, which, uh, what I did was I just gave them our document with their utility, um, profile in there, but then kinda go through and, I guess you would basically kinda go through and search and wherever it says district, change it to city. But, but I do wanna say that there are some differences in what requirements are for cities versus districts on the water and wastewater systems. And so, that's why it's hard for me to say that, you know, the, the exact amount of time. I guess if I went through a year of it, next year I could probably tell you, it, it will take this much time. But I, I mean, I really don't know. And as Mike said, there could be, um, you know, violation notices, that sort of thing, all of those things, it just depends on what it is. We, we received some violation notices at the, the, for the MUD yesterday, that were simply that we had not paid some fees for some districts that merged and don't exist anymore. Well, that was pretty simple. We sent them a letter and said, "Those districts don't exist anymore. That's a, not a, a real violation." But had it been something else, it could've taken us days or weeks to deal with. So, it's just hard to say what it would, really what it would take.
I'm, I'm pretty sure all of you are aware that, uh, when we created the public water system in the PIDS, uh, we were immediately tagged with, uh, alleged violations. Uh, and that was last summer, it was a year ago, I guess, when, when that create, when that was created. We're still dealing with it. We, you know, we were like deer in the headlights, you know? Who do we talk to? Now what? You know, we learned. And, and those alleged violations, I think, will effectively, once, once TCEQ, uh, does what they do and, and reviews our, our collected input that we've provided, I think they'll go away. But, the fact of the matter is, uh, I looked around my staff and said, "Who knows anything about this?" And I got crickets, right? Because we don't work with that. And isn't, and, and, and the MUD folks deal with TCEQ on a daily basis, almost. I mean, they know who to call and, and how it's organized and that kinda thing. It's, it's either, for the MUD, for the, for the council's perspective, it's either that we can agree to, to have that expertise work on our behalf, and if they want payment for it, fine, we'll negotiate that, or I gotta hire somebody with that expertise, because I don't have anybody right now.
All right, President Moss wanted to-
Uh, before- In connection with the whole discussion and, uh, listening to what Kevin's comments were, we have never understood completely, uh, this, uh, wholesale versus retail agreement. Uh, as a simple person, it seems to me like a retail agreement is a whole lot simpler setup for everybody. It does not penalize the town, it does not penalize the PIDS. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to recommend, if it's not possible, uh, that we have a committee from the council and, and a committee from the MUD to get together and resolve what is the best way to go in this regard, as far as the, uh, the entire, all the residents of the town are. And I think they could take a look at this whole thing, uh, and, uh, and, uh, maybe relook at it from a standpoint of, of what is the simplest way to go and what is best for the town. It's gotten very complicated, uh, with what we've got now, and I think that could be greatly simplified. But, uh, I think the council and, uh, and the MUD directors, uh, a committee ought to get together and take a look at that, and I'm making that proposal, Mayor.
All right, so I'm gonna ask a question of attorney, uh, about that. The way I read how we're agended, I'm not sure that we are agended to form a committee to look at an agreement, to, to change its style. So, how do you feel?
We're not. The agenda item is for a discussion of whether we want to amend the existing agreement that we have, or whether we just wanna look at adding that as a service on that personnel services interlocal. So, certainly the independent bodies could take action to form a committee at their own meetings, but not, not on this agenda item.
That, that would've been kinda how I felt, it would've been an independent body issue. So, so, um, let, um, let me kinda come back to that in just a second, um, and I'll try to see if I can't get some direction from council. Uh, but my interpretation would be that, um, you're recommending that we form a committee to look at those styles again, and the bodies could name their members to be on that and take that action at a time.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I don't, I don't see how it's agended here, but-
Right. They could also look at this, uh, this agreement, uh, as far as, uh, the MUD providing the services, uh, for the town with some kind of a contract agreement and so forth. Uh, to me, if, uh, if this could be worked out in a committee, then, then that becomes, uh, superfluous.
Uh, yes. Kevin, did somebody on council have their hand up? No? Okay. Kevin?
Um, I, in regards to what, uh, President Moss has said, I think, uh, I, I personally don't have any problem with us doing the required reports. They have to be done. Uh, it isn't, you know, a new contract or revised contract, or whatever you wanna call it, isn't gonna happen overnight. Um, I'm not against, uh, us doing the reports, come up with a cost, how much, uh, you know, hours are involved, and then charging on that basis. But also like to have a deadline of maybe October 1st, which is the beginning of our year, to determine, okay, are we gonna go forward with possibly a, a retail contract going forward, or some sort of revised wholesale agreement?
All right. Mayor Protem Lamont.
Uh, just to be clear, 'cause I know the average PIDS resident, a person hears retail and wholesale, they go, "Oh, wait a minute, it's gonna cost me more money." Jennifer, just to be clear, so the residents, the PIDS residents know, there's no difference in their cost of water and wastewater, if it's a retail or a wholesale agreement. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Ah. Don't pick it up.
Um, I, I guess in some ways it could be the same, it could be different, I don't know. But, the reason I say that is, if they were retail, they would be an out-of-district customer. And our rates right now for an out-of-district customer are fifteen percent more than, um, for an in-district customer. That does make them a special class of customer. They do have a, um, a voice, as Mike says, as far as rate setting. Um, and I, that's not, I'm not really sure what other things, uh, there are other things that, that PIDS residents would be interested in, but I would say that the major concern residents usually have are, "What are my water and sewer rates gonna be?" They would have a voice in that, is what I'm trying to say, because they would be a, a class of, of district customers, uh, outs, you know, out of district. But the reason I can't say that that fifteen percent is necessarily more than what they're going to pay, is because in the current contract, there's a, a surcharge that they will pay for new debt. And, just kinda playing around with the budget right now, it looks like, um, you know, based on what the tax values, which, actually, today we got new values that are lower, so that means the number I'm gonna give you is probably gonna increase a little bit. But based on tax values of last week, it looked like for the, the new debt on the tax rate, and, the tax debt and the, the O and M tax, that every PIDS customer will pay somewhere close to about eight dollars a month for that surcharge. So, the question is, is that more than fifteen percent higher rates? I don't know. It depends on what they use. If they use a slower amount, then that's actually more than they would be paying if they were retail. But if they use a higher amount, I guess you could say that that's probably gonna be lower than if they were retail. So, the customers, they, they pay the same water and sewer rates, yes, flat rates, but there's either a cer- but in the case of the PIDS, they're going to be paying a surcharge that the town, uh, it's a, it's a pass-through from the town to us. So, it's not really exactly the same rates.
So, let me, um, ask a question. I'll kinda put it in the form of statement and see if this is a correct statement. In order for us to have a retail agreement and everybody pay the same, you'd have to change your rate structure to change what out-of-district would be, assuming you even wanted to do that. But in that case, that would say the rates were the same, if you made out-of-district the same as in-district.
Yes, but I don't see how we would ever do that, because out-of-district does not pay taxes-
Right.
-and in-district pays taxes.
Right. I knew that, I was headed that direction.
Right.
So, the issue of going to retail is, under our current agreement, there's a way to equalize, um, the debt.
Right.
Would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
Between the PIDS and the MUD? If we go to retail, at least the way we were talking before, there was no equalization of that. Is that correct?
No, it's equalization of the debt, it's just built into the water and sewer rates. And they're, in this case, fifteen percent more.
Okay. All right. So, um-
It's not as clear.
So, would you, would you think you need to look at the fact to see if the fifteen percent covers what would be needed to- what would be needed to make sure that we're kinda still equal?
Oh, absolutely. I, I would think so because...
Because the 15% may or may not...
Right. It may, it may not be enough to cover their section, their such, um, portion of the debt. So that would definitely have to be looked at.
All right. President Moss had a question and then Lamont.
Sure. If the consideration for the, uh, for a change, such as I was proposing perhaps that we look at, would result in, uh, in a more cost to any of the Pid residents, if I were a Pid resident, I would be very much against it. And I wouldn't do it. So, uh, I see some real advantages to the retail agreement, but, uh, but as a Pid resident, I certainly would not be in favor of it if it cost me more a month. The $8 a month, uh, is $8 a month. So, uh, maybe I should withdraw my suggestion.
Well, that, that's, that's in lieu of taxes. That's in lieu of the taxes.
All right. Mr. Lamont?
Uh, just getting back to your time spent that, I don't, I understand you don't know what that time would be. Would there be equal, you'd have to spend the same amount of time if it was a retail or a wholesale agreement, or would one of them go away where it'd just be one form?
It would just be one form if, if you were retail.
Retail.
All right. So that, that makes, solves that issue.
Right.
Well, let me...
What, what effect, I'm sorry, were you...
Go ahead, go ahead. It was a comment. Go ahead.
Okay. What effect, well, I'm gonna back up because I think we're getting more and more off subject. So I had Kevin Carr and then Neil Toomey.
Um, on what Jim, I mean, in no way, um, would I pass something that would penalize the Pid people. We had an agreement from the onset when we, you were the mayor and we agreed, okay, the Pid would pay the same as the mud. I think what Jennifer is saying is in lieu of the taxes, because they aren't paying the taxes that we are, that would be the surcharge. Is that correct?
The current wholesale agreement, yes, has, um, for the surcharge, yes.
Basically, everyone would be on a level plate. I would pay the same as a Pid resident would pay when it came out to the very end. Is that correct?
If you leave the agreement the same.
If you, yeah, the wholesale has the surcharge. Retail would not have a surcharge. It would just have an out-of-district rate.
That would be...
And I do wanna say, I wanna go back to something. When we first started the rate study, and it's been so long ago that I actually forgot about this, but at that time, we were working on a retail agreement. So the 15% is how we got to, that's what it would take to equalize the, the rates. So at that time, when we first created this, the 15% was going to be enough to cover the, the, the retail debt.
Okay.
Yeah, the debt for retail.
A simple question. Can you make the retail agreement equivalent for both parties, Pid and Mud One customers, pay the same?
Theory, yes.
Using 15%, 14, 16, whatever.
I'm not sure what you mean. They pay the same. Yes, they will pay the same...
At the end, the bottom line. Whether you do it through percentage, higher water rates to offset the taxes or whatever.
Annual cost of water and wastewater being equal.
Correct.
As best you could.
I would certainly try to do that, yes.
All right. I had Neil Toomey who had a question.
Well, I, I, as we wander, uh, on this agenda, um, I think we got, we, let's focus on the more immediate and, uh, which is what Kevin was suggesting, uh, one of the suggestions of Kevin is, uh, basically, I don't know if you wanna call it an interlocal agreement or, or, uh, or a side agreement, but between now and October 1st, Jennifer would take all the responsibilities for preparing the reports. Again, she does not sign them. They would, they would be going to the town to be signed because they still have that responsibility. And that would give us time. And then, as Jim Moss has, uh, has brought up, maybe a two and two committee, two from the mud, two from the town council, have time to look at all the different aspects of this and then make a recommendation back to both bodies about what's the best way to proceed. Either wholesale agreement with an amendment, retail agreement as, as been discussed. But we don't have the answers here right now. And, uh, but in the meantime, you have a town water system that needs to file reports. So, uh, that would buy us the time to, uh, have reasonable people look at it and then come back and say, "Okay, here's the pros, here's the cons. Here's how we, uh, now have a out-of-district rate of, uh, you know, uh, 1.0, you know, 1.6 or 1.7 or 1.5 or whatever it may be, and we have equalization that way." Or we, we, as we said, well, now we stay with the wholesale agreement. And that'll also give her experience to know what the impact on her schedule is as far as the reports, 'cause we're talk, we'll be talking basically a quarter of the year. So, uh, so we'll have feedback for the council members who wanna know, and we wanna know, what's the impact on her time and resources. And at the same time, uh, we'll have our, uh, our group have a responsibility to make a recommendation to both of us.
Can, can I ask one question real quick?
One second, Jennifer, 'cause I had Mike with a hand and then I'll come back to you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
Uh, I wanna just, uh, kinda get to that 30,000-foot level. Notwithstanding the comments that, that President Moss has made about, you know, possible committee and working toward a, a different kind of an agreement, we both, both organizations have spent significant amounts of money to get to where we've got. And we've got a 99-year contract that make provisions to ensure that every citizen in Trophy Club is gonna be treated equally. We have that in place today, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we feel comfortable about that. And in fact, with the organ, with the agreement that we have today, uh, it's even more clear that we can identify what that surcharge is. It's relative to new debt taken on by the mud. So to, you know, my answer to Director Carr's question is, no, the Pid is not gonna pay what a mud resident pays because the mud's already paying for old debt. And that surcharge is related to any new debt that you take on. At least that's my understanding.
Yes.
So, you know, the, the mud customer will also take on their fair share of new debt. The Pid will take on their fair share, but they're still paying for old debt that you currently have on the books. So I don't know that you'll ever get to that perfect equalization, but we do have an agreement that says that's what, that's how we ought to approach it moving forward. And it's very clear how to calculate it and it's very clear how to, to manage it. The only concern that I had was, you know, CCR, the annual CCR report and any potential problems with alleged violations or any time we needed to go to, to TCEQ. I just needed somebody with that expertise to be able to lean on and say, "I need you to help me with whatever."
And Mike, that's, that kinda leads to what my question is. I don't know that you, y'all don't have anything due right now, do you?
No, there's nothing due to the TCEQ.
So whatever it, whatever we decided, I would think it would just need to be a purr as you need it. In other words, like, it wouldn't be some sort of, "The town's gonna pay the mud X dollars a year for this because you may not need me to do something," right?
We can amend the existing contract. We're already gonna amend it based on item A. We can put that amendment in there and be done with it. I, I, I don't know that it's gonna be a huge impact on Jennifer and her staff to, to take care of the, the rest of this stuff because pretty much they're doing it anyway.
All right. Director Hayes?
It seems, seems like we all agree that if you continue with the current contract, the 99-year contract, uh, there will be double work on a series of reports. So that would be something to avoid if you can. In order to avoid that, either through the rate order or through the contract, you can say that the Pid is a special class of out-of-dist, or out-of-district customer, let's say. They therefore will pay according to the following rules, which are, they pay the same water rate as anybody else pays, and they pay a surcharge for future ex, large capital expenditures on the mud's part. It seems to me like if you were to do that, you would get the best of both worlds.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna try to direct, uh, the council to take some kind of action so that we can kinda bring some closure to this. What I'm looking for, council, um, is a motion to direct the town manager to work with the general manager of the mud, um, to bring back to us the amendment for 7.4 and an amendment to the 99-year agreement, uh, that would, um, somehow document the additional services that we're talking about providing, uh, with the date of, uh, trying to come back with something else in, by October 1st as a recommendation for how we go beyond that. Does that seem to make sense to everyone? Have I kinda stated that appropriately?
Yes.
So, so we're still staying with the October 1 deadline?
No, that's, I don't know. That's up to how you make the motion. But my, my personal opinion is, I was so happy that we put this to bed some time ago that, that I'd sure like some more time for the 99-year agreement to work. But the fact that we are going to amend it for 7.4 makes sense that we ought to amend it for contractual services, if you wanna call it that, whatever that is that you're gonna provide for us. My impression would be that if we had a sewer spill in the Pid, somebody has to file a report with TCEQ.
And we do that. That's an operational report. So that's done.
If that happens, no matter what we do, it's these other reports that might happen with TCEQ, including drought contingency plan and, um, one other...
Water conservation.
Water conservation plan.
Sumer confidence report, annual report, um, there's, I think, I think he's talking about like water development board reports. There's, um, water loss audits and all kinds of stuff they have too, um...
So, uh...
So if a motion included that we are willing to compensate the mud upon special request, we deal with that appropriately.
But you're, how much are you talking here? You're, you're telling us to make a motion and we have no idea of what this cost is gonna be to us.
That's right. You can do a not-to- exceed.
I think the, well, I, I think the motion really is for us to work together and come back by October 1 with, with some, with a proposal, right?
Now, I realize October, we have our next joint session, but we both have budget processes coming up. Is October an unrealistic timeframe?
I'm gonna look to staff to answer that.
Oh, that's, that's where I was going.
Do you need to bring back what the call, I mean, what, how we want these amendments? I think that's...
No, I don't. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I think there's this whole concept of retail.
Retail versus wholesale. That's not the item agenda. I understand that.
I understand that. But let's not do half of it one time, I think.
But...
Just a suggestion. We have budgeting coming up and...
October 1st represents data of, of the last quarter. I don't know that we, it's fair to expect Jennifer and I to come back based on last quarter's data the day after the quarter ends. So, I, I mean, personally, I would like additional time, especially given the fact that I've got relatively a, a new council and trying to get through this first budget cycle as I'm anticipating being pretty difficult.
Right. I would move, as soon as I can do that nowadays. I would move to direct the town manager to work with the mud general manager, um, to bring back amendment to the appropriate sections to the 99-year contract for, uh, services, water and wastewater services, uh, dealing with the issue of, of the district providing necessary reporting services.
Do we have a time date on that? I just wanna leave it open.
I didn't put a time date.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
And so your, your motion includes doing all of this work with compensation? Where you're gonna compensate?
That would surface in the amendment that would come forward to us.
I would think that somehow that's going to have to be dealt with. Either it's no compensation or they're gonna document compensation. And they could come back with no compensation until a period of time and then say, at, prior to this date, we should come up with better figures, but...
Would the compensation be through the water and sewer rates? I'm just curious.
I was not including water and sewer.
I, I, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, some kind of a hourly or daily or event rate.
I know, but I'm just...
In the event that we run into something that we need help with.
But how would you pay for it? That's what I'm asking because we wanna get technical here. It sounds like the mud people would be having to pay for it twice.
You would in, you would invoice the town.
You're absolutely right.
So I mean, so we would look at it.
As a citizen, somebody's gonna pay for it. So all the citizens would indirectly be, directly be paying for it, no matter where you lived. So it would be equal in that sense.
Well, and if you, you can look at it this way. If you live in the mud, you are paying for it twice, but you're having the, as Mike explained, you're having the expertise applied to it. So you're ensuring that it's done correctly the first time and you don't have the opportunity cost lost of having to relearn and duplicate that skill elsewhere. So you are paying for it twice, but you're not paying on the town's side for having to potentially do it in a less than optimal fashion. So...
But, but what I think Jennifer's saying is that the mud customer is paying the mud and then the town's gonna pay, so the mud customer's paying the town. So we're paying twice for the same...
Well, remember, the mud is receiving every nickel of revenue from the Pid. They're, they're, they're being compensated. There, there is no cost associated with the current contract because they get all of the revenue generated from the Pid. And as the Pid continues to grow, so does their revenue stream.
If, if we look at it this way, it's not as if it's being done for free now. It's like Mike said, we either have to hire somebody to do it or we're having to take somebody's time to do it. We're paying somebody to do it now. So whether we pay the mud to do it or whether we pay the town to do it, it's getting paid for. I mean, we're paying for it one way or we're paying, I mean, we're paying for it, not one way or another. We're paying for it, period. It's either we hire somebody to do it or we use hours of our existing staff to do it or we use hours of their existing staff to do it and we just compensate them back for those hours. It's, it's a, it's a, it's an expense that's gonna be incurred regardless, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Just one second, please. Uh, Mr. Perrow, I had someone over here who was getting, trying to get my attention. So who was it over here? All right, Jim Hayes and then Jim...
I, I think the idea that somebody's gonna have to pay for it, the double reporting, there, there are other options to avoid that. You can adopt as much a, a significant portion of a retail contract and avoid all the double reporting. Now, what you're now faced with, however, is if we don't put something in the contract or in the rate order to override the 15% for an out-of-district customer, uh, then you're gonna have, some people are gonna, $8 is gonna be better for them. Some people, $15 is gonna be better for them. Doesn't seem like a, a particularly good process. I would think you, you've already put in the contract this idea that you're going to pay a, an assessment fee to the mud for large capital expenditures. That's done. You don't have to redo that work. It's already been done. So it seems to me like we ought, you know, I know it took you a long time to get to the 99-year contract and you spent a lot of money, both bodies did. But now the work is basically done, so why not go to a retail contract and make extra provisions for the Pid on ca, on mud, large capital expenditures? That doesn't seem like a big task to me.
All right. I'm gonna go back to council. Um, I tried to make a motion. It died for lack of a second so that you could document that.
Greg seconded. Yes. That's, we're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
What was the motion then?
Whatever, whatever you said.
Check the tape.
That's what I thought. You didn't know what you said.
I, I, I would add though that...
I have it written down. That's the reason I made everybody wait.
Let, let me ask this. Um, the $8... The eight dollars a month, where do we get that from? I, I should know this, but
I don't know. That's the first time I've heard that number.
I mean, it can't, I remember us discussing that.
The way it said is, okay, I have to do
Let me interrupt just a second because I think Mr. Perrow needed the floor before
I, I just had a basic question. It seemed that all this discussion is around this, this unknown cost to do this extra work twice. And, and we don't seem to know at this moment what that cost might be, how often it's done, how long it takes to fill out the appropriate forms, how often the forms are submitted and so on. Could you provide the council with a fee schedule for what you are expecting to have to do on behalf of the town regarding all the required reports and forms? And let us know the actual dollars and cents of what the cost might be to the town if we were to do a wholesale contract and then pay for the fees as necessary.
I could, I could try to put something together, absolutely.
That might help take some of the confusion out of the issue.
All right, Councilmember Schaffner. Which is this going to go to Jennifer?
Probably going to take an overhead projector, but, okay, so I take what the I have to set two tax rates basically. One's what I call my pretend tax rate and one's my real tax rate. So my pretend tax rate, I break that down into two more tax rates. One is the, let's just talk about the debt part of what the, what, through this contract, what the pit's going to pay. I look at what the annual payment. I ta, I pretend like that the only thing that I need to set my tax rate is the current year's new debt, right? And I'm just going to make something up. Nobody go anywhere with this because this is not a real number. But let's pretend like that the debt service payment for fifteen is going to be a hundred thousand dollars. So I take the whole, everybody in the pit and the MUD and I take their tax values and I set a tax rate. All right? And it's a pretend tax rate. Because from that tax rate, then I, then I extrapolate if it were a real tax rate, this is how much the MUD would pay and this is how much the pit would pay based on those values. And then that amount, and let's just pretend like the pit's part was forty thousand dollars of that hundred thousand. Then I say there's twelve hundred customers in the pit, forty thousand divided by twelve hundred customers by twelve months is, I'm going to make something up, ten dollars. And then ten dollars divided by, you know, twelve months comes out to be whatever per month. And that's the surcharge for the new debt.
Okay.
So it's not real simple. Then you do kind of the same thing again when you set the O and M rate.
Okay, can we not add this part of it to it? So in other words, if we think that it's going to cost you fifteen thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or whatever you think doing our reporting is going to cost, can we not add that and do the surcharge on that portion as well? Because that would be considered new.
Yes, and that's why I kind of go back to my first question that I was asking is I need to know how you want to pay for that service because that is going to make a difference. I mean, I agree.
To me, that would be a fairer way to do this. Rather than a MUD customer having to pay twice, you're putting that in the surcharge and the pit customer's paying for that and you, that's worked into the, into the surcharge and you do our reports. But to me, that's the simple way.
Personally, I think you're going to find that this is going to be such a miniscule amount. I'm not sure that there is a fiscal impact.
She's very costly. That's her assignment.
Well, we'll do, we'll let Adrian do it then.
Okay, so I, Councilmember Reed has handed up.
I, I just want to make sure I understand the motion because I, I thought, I thought we were kind of just saying MUD handles this till October-ish. We were hoping that we could put together two, two body committees and we can talk about all these details then. I thought we were trying to put a stopgap in place. The town doesn't have to mess with this till, till we figure out what's going on in October and then all these details can be worked out with these two subcommittees. Is that not what's being proposed to us? Because it sounds like we're diving a lot deeper into
That's what I was proposing.
Okay, so, so what I'm talking about, the Oc, till October is what you're proposing?
I didn't put a date in it. I just said, bring it back to us.
I think your, your motion was for the two managers to get together.
That is correct.
There wasn't any mention of a body to just evaluate. Even if they have to go through the contract, there might be other, you know, areas that need to be amended too and I, I, that's why I think
Well, you, you're right. I didn't include the bodies because I thought that was out of order. I'm referring it to the council. I'm referring it to the town manager to deal with. The council, if they choose to have a committee, can make that decision at a meeting.
Okay.
But it's documented. So that's the reason I didn't do that, Kevin.
I knew there was one reason.
So can you put, can you put in there till October in the motion?
I would be happy to include that when I restate it.
Okay.
All right, motion is that the council direct the town manager to work with the MUD general manager to bring back to council recommendation, recommended agreements to the ninety-nine year contract for water and wastewater services to document the fact that the MUD will provide necessary reporting to TCEQ until October fifteenth. Because you wanted a little time.
Thirty-one, thirty?
No, I'm I think I heard something different.
In my motion?
Yes. Can you, can you restate your motion, please?
Council direct the town manager to work with the MUD general manager to bring back to council recommended amendment to the ninety-nine year contract for water and wastewater services to document the fact that the MUD will provide necessary reporting to TCEQ until a date.
Why, why would you put a date in there? I guess that's mine.
I
A date to come back to us or a date?
Date to come, well
A date that's That's what confused me.
Reporting will be provided until that date. If we don't extend it and document it. That, that's the reason I didn't really want to put a date in to begin with.
Yeah.
Was, was, okay, we're given a task to Mike to do. It's Mike's job to do it. We're going to continue to try to ask why isn't that on the agenda? And my assumption is that the MUD will maybe direct the, the general manager to do that and we'll have something back. We're amending what we're, what we're, in this whole item, number one, we're amending that ninety-nine year agreement. Section seven dot four is going to come back to us. I'm saying, come back with the wording for the amendment to whatever section's necessary to document this. We take action on it. Hopefully the MUD will take action on it. It'll last for ninety days or whatever period you want to say. And then we'll try to deal with those other issues, which I think are appropriate to deal with, but I'm out of order myself. So I made a motion. I've clarified the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Greg Lamont seconded. Okay, now we can discuss. Nobody wants to now. We've discussed
I just want to be, I just want to be clear.
Yes.
You want me to work with Jennifer to come back with total administrative amendments to the existing wholesale contract.
And Nick used the term earlier, reporting services. I think that's a good phrase to help keep this in scope, maybe.
That's what you want us to
Reports that you're talking about of the, the, the annual water quality report.
But it's, again, we don't have the crystal ball. It, it may be that we are cited for an alleged violation someday.
That's correct.
And, and we need their help to
That's correct.
Deal with that. So it's
You know, if you wanted to include report A, B, C, D and any others that might come up in that wording, that's surely
Okay.
acceptable, but, but I'm saying somehow let's document this fact. If we want to head down a path of a different agreement, then we'll head down that path later. That's a separate issue.
Okay.
And if there's some unforeseen circumstance, then an hourly rate should be included in that presentation, I would imagine as well. In case that was to be an unknown entity.
Let's see if we can't come up with something that's amenable to the council.
All right.
And I, and I think I've given my direction to you on how I would like to see it paid for.
So my motion says October thirty-one. Is that right, Greg? Is that what it says?
That would be nice.
Okay. Give us a little extra time. So any other discussion? All right, council, I call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, show your hand. It is unanimous. It's done. We have a motion.
I make a motion that we direct the general manager to work with the town manager regarding amendments to the ninety-nine year contract, administrative services, reporting services and TCEQ, TCEQ requirements by October first, twenty fourteen.
October thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. Okay. Halloween? Are you sure?
I have a second.
I have a second? It may be all dressed up in costume.
Any further discussion over here? If not, call for the motion. All those in favor. It is unanimous.
All right. Item two, twenty fourteen dash twelve eighty-five T. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a potential ninety-nine year lease of district property on land used by the town of Trophy Club for its annex building at one hundred Municipal Drive. Back in two thousand and six, the leadership at that time, which was Master District President Kevin Carr and Mayor Sanders, along with, I assume, their respective council and boards, worked on an agreement to deal with the placement of the annex building on MUD property. Not sure why it was never signed. The information I have was that council took action to direct that it be signed. Is that right, Patricia? Is that what I read? Somebody said in that minutes? No?
I, I didn't see that in any minutes today and I was checking actually with Lori to try to find out if we could come up with the last date any action was taken. And the last date that I came up was in April, May of two thousand and six. And it was sent back to negotiate. I had one contract that had certain language and the last contract that I had had two highlighted sections about payment and I have nothing after that.
Okay. So the action was, it was sent back with a few items was the last thing, I guess, we had. So I think partly this is on the agenda because there is nothing documented about even ownership of building, the fact that the building exists on MUD land. There is the legal aspect that says in real estate law, you put something on somebody else's property, it becomes the property of the landowner in certain circumstances. The interesting thing about this agreement is that it actually said that when it was paid off, that the town would own seventy-seven percent of the improvements. I'm not quite sure how you split those things, but that may have been why it went back.
Yeah, if I remember right, I think at that time that town manager Brandon actually wanted the deed to the property, which
Deed to the building?
Right, which was owned by MUD one and Dean Henry was the president of MUD one and he told him friendly words, no.
So this, this particular item has two reasons for talking about it. One is that, as you know, that the town is going through a process of trying to decide where we build additional capacity for people, office, for police and town staff. And at this point, we have negotiated a price for the land that belongs to the country club. And we have worked through a contract for sale, which has not been executed at this point. We have found that the people in charge of the land by the Methodist Church are willing to talk, at least they were less than thirty days ago. They do have a new pastor that has started there, but that, what I understand, the initial approval has to come from above the congregation and then come down later. And the town has provided to the people at the Methodist church what some general sketches were about the layout and how much land that might be and where the parking might be. So that's been provided to Methodist church. And thirdly, PD thirty, the development of PD thirty, Mr. Beck has made it known that he would prefer and there are reasons for that, that a municipal building of some form exists in PD thirty. And we do not have a price for that nor do we have any plan other than the preference to do so. And I won't go into all of those details. So the town is faced with some decisions about what do we do for property. One of those options is obviously use of the annex building for a long term and potential remodel or something with the annex building to give it additional capacity because the way it sits today will not solve the problem. So that's the reason the council, I believe, is trying to say, can we at least come to an agreement about that building and its land, which will then help the council make future decisions. Is that correct, Mr. Perrow? You were pointing this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's the basic crux of the whole issue.
All right, any comments or questions anybody want to ask?
I, I heard you mentioned remodel and expand. I mean, what extent does that, like two stories, three stories? Build additional by the pass-through there?
If I may, uh
Mr. Perrow?
What, what we had looked at was the amount of land surrounding the existing annex building. There's approximately forty-five hundred square feet of land that surrounds that structure. The current town staff in this building is occupying a little less than a thousand square feet. So if we were to get information on modifying that building in some way, expanding that building in some way, we could provide the necessary thousand square feet that's currently needed, which includes the two people from the police department building, into that new structure and have over three thousand square feet of additional space for future growth and/or other types of expansion in that area without going to a second floor.
So in essence, you're saying create the building for a town hall structure?
Well, it would be, it would be a, a potential town hall structure in lieu of building a brand new one.
And where are you going to park, where are all these people going to park? Just out of curiosity.
Well, if we, if we were to add the additional staff that we have now, from where it's currently at, we're currently using the same number of people here with the police department parking and everything else. So the other part of this was the consideration, and I've discussed this with a few of the members of the MUD, to possibly locate the third water tank closer to the two main tanks and possibly relocate some of the equipment from the current storage area to the wastewater treatment plant area, which would allow additional parking space for that expanded utilization.
I, I just personally, I don't, I'm not in agreement with that. I don't have a problem with possibly talking about leasing the existing building, but going the route of a town hall, you know, it just doesn't make sense. This road coming up here, Municipal Drive is narrow. It's when there's a big event going on with the council or sometimes the MUD or the parking lot is filled, the people can't fit in this room. And there's a lot of downsides of that as far as using that space. And then you have the, just the remodels, I mean, I mean, Garrett could probably, he's in construction. Usually when you start remodels, it's more costly than just starting from ground zero.
And, and that may be the case, but when I was running for, for this office, a lot of people came to me and asked that very question. And they looked at the fourteen point two million dollars expenses, starting from scratch and building a brand new facility versus expanding what we have, parking spaces being considered as well. And there was a number of people that says, at least we need to look at the possibility of what we can add. Now, we, we've got the town staff currently here. They come here every day and they work here every day and they're using the spaces that are here. And this number of people that we see in attendance tonight is more representative of what we typically see in a council meeting or a MUD meeting than the situations you're referring to. And in those circumstances, if and when there was a large special session type meeting, we could always get additional space at the country club or somewhere else for that unique circumstance. But from a week to week basis, this is pretty much what we need.
But from what I, again, I, I think, you know, But from what I, again, I think, you know, for a town hall, personally, I think they need to find a lot that has enough room for, you know, unknowns. You always build bigger than just what you need. As far as a meeting hall, in the, in the plans that I saw, there were meeting halls that the community could use. And if we're going to spend any money, I mean, let's do it right and do it on a piece of land that can accommodate doing it right.
All right. I had a hand from Director Thomas and then Director Lamont, I mean, Councilman Lamont.
Yeah, I just wanted to focus back on the, on the item itself.
Thank you.
Y'all have got lots of decisions ahead of you, and you're the ones that have to make them. I mean, this is town council facilities and properties, and that's, that's what y'all are elected to do. I'm absolutely in favor of giving you a long-term lease on that land, that building sitting on, if in fact you want to remodel that land to, to house all of your employees so that you don't have to go build another building for the employees. Now, if you want to use it for other purposes, then you'd have to come back and tell me what the other purposes are. But quite honestly, I, I absolutely would be in agreement to say, i-if you want to expand that and give us the four offices in our, in our building, which we can use because you're going to move Mike and Patricia and the other two over to your new facilities, great, I'd be more than willing to give you a long-term lease to do that.
Thank you. Lamont.
Well, I think the way it's worded, we'd have to look at more of a broad term than just town hall. I would look at municipal services. It could be for police, it could be for parks and streets and other type maintenances that we maybe wouldn't want to put in a town hall if we did put a PD thirty or the Methodist Church. I, I think, I don't want to narrow it to a town hall. Just municipal services would be, to me, a broader term.
And Greg, I, I honestly was thinking in terms of offices. You know, you've got six people that are not housed in your current, in the current annex building. I thought you were going to talk about expanding that so you can actually not only put those six people there, but have enough room that if you need additional hires in the future, you can put them there. I think that would be a great use of that facility. I just don't want to see an out-of-control shelter, I think.
I want to try to focus us in on the agenda item. We are kind of going past it. I had Director Moss who wanted this floor and Director Toomey, and I'll come to y'all in that order. But, but let's try to stay on the fact of the, the item is, are you willing to try to work through a long-term agreement that documents the use of the annex building and the land and how that is structured? That's, that's really the item before us. And, and if we don't do that, then that tells us, go elsewhere for what we need to do. If you want to work through this, then that puts it on the table for one thing for us to consider. So Director Moss and then Director Toomey.
I think in putting in, as, as you worded it, Mayor, my, my first thought and what I, the comment I was going to make was, we've not, we've not had agreement so far, and it's not been any problem. And we have no idea of what the town's plans are, no idea of where it's going. I would be agreeable also to a, to a long-term lease, depending on what's put in the thing, to make sure that the council would be aware of the fact that we're very happy for them to have the annex building, to add on to it, to change whatever they want. That would be in the benefit of all of our residents. So I have no problem with that. We just have to work out what would be in that agreement. There'd have to be some specifics in there that I don't even know the answer to right now. But that, that's my thought on it.
All right. Director Toomey.
I, I agree with everything President Moss is saying because, you know, if I look at the agenda item and there's no backup, you know, when I first read this, I said, oh, the town wants to lease the land underneath the annex. And then I'm hearing about parking lots and other things and moving the water tank. And, you know, again, we have a agenda item and we go kind of far afield on this. But also getting back to what Jim Moss says, is I was on ways and means when the annex was first proposed. It was actually supposed to be on this side of the building. And there was actually doorways and from coming from here, and there was all this other stuff being discussed.
Split level, too.
And then they turned around and they discovered they couldn't build there because of some type of problem with the soil of regarding the foundation. The trouble was the town had already borrowed the money, saying that there, this was going to be an annex attached to this building. So if you ever want to know why there's a breezeway between the two buildings, it was because of that. Then they had a scurry and put it over on that side. And then after, after they signed all the contracts, it basically came up, well, you haven't talked to the mud. The mud owns the land. And I don't like, you know, we, we're talking about a lot of things that are not on the agenda here tonight, but I, I think I'd like to see a more clear path, more defined, and know what exactly is going to be going on. Again, mirroring what President Moss said, because I've been down this path before. And then we're, we're caught because certain language in a loan agreement says it's going to be attached to the building, and oh, we got to do this. And because we borrowed the money and then, that was five, I think five hundred and forty thousand dollars at the time.
Six hundred.
Six fifty, okay. That's a number of years ago. But I mean, it was like we were, we either, we had no choice as, as a town to how, how to move forward. But it was like, you know, certain due diligence wasn't done ahead of time, and all of a sudden we were scrambling. And that's why there's no lease there, because nobody ever talked to the mud beforehand.
All right. So I had Schaffner who had his hand up and then...
And you'll probably need one of those waters, Kevin. Did you have about five of them in front of you there? I wouldn't mind signing a ninety-nine year lease if we go back to two-point-oh-two A and you, you pay us thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve cents a year. No, seriously, are we talking money here or we just, you're wanting, or I don't know who's wanting the ninety-nine year lease, to be clear. Is this, I, I go back to the money. Is there money involved in this or?
Oh, there's money. Lot of money.
Or are you just saying you want to sign a ninety? I, I guess I don't understand why we would sign a ninety-nine year lease.
I, I'm going to say I was going to ask the same question and, and why a lease instead of just selling the property? I'm just asking that. I mean, why, why would you want to do a lease instead of just buying the property?
All of that could surely be investigated. The way it was worded was differently. But I, I think the intent is provide some direction of how you want to deal with this issue. It's an open issue. It's, it's not a signed agreement. How do you want to document it? Where you want to go so that we can move forward.
But what, what's the issue? I guess is what I'm trying to figure out.
Maybe, maybe, maybe this will help clear it up. I, I think what we really need to know is, is the mud willing to lease or sell or make that land available to the town for an extended period of time? And this will give us the ability to go back and make a decision. So we're just looking for clarification that, yes, that land is available for an extended period of time. We may come back and say, guys, we're going to build a town hall somewhere else. We don't need the land, that's fine. But I think going into the decision that we as a body have to make, it's a big decision. It's going to require lots of dollars, and it's going to be a very long-term decision. So I think what we need to do is we need to be able to place every option on the table. And so we just need to simply know, is it an option that we can have the ability to have access to that property, whether it's a purchase or a lease, for an extended period of time? We would come back to you at some point in the future and say, we believe we can build this on it, we can remodel it, we can do, or we may come back and say it's not feasible. We, we don't want to do anything with it at all. But before we go spend the time and invest the dollars in researching what we could do with that existing facility, we really need to know, y'all have any interest in even letting us be there, or are there future plans for that to be something else?
Very well stated. So I have multiple people wanting the floor. And I think Schaffner was first, or did you raise your hand back after Greg, after Garrett started talking?
No, that, I, I just wanted to know what we're, the issue was, because I wasn't clear.
Director Carr, and then I had, I think, Director Hayes, and then Director Thomas. Okay. Y'all decide among yourselves. Kevin's next.
All I have to say is, where were you thirty minutes ago, Garrett? I mean, I agree with everything he said. He's right on mark. I mean, again, I'm one person. I'm, you know, I'm in favor of listening to anything, lease, purchase. I mean, it's the council's decision to come up with, do they want that to be an option that they're going to use? Are they going to put street parks, maybe people in there rather than, you know, build it for a town hall? That's your decision, but yes, I'm open if you, you know, want to talk about lease or purchase of that property.
All right. Director Thomas and then Director Hayes. Director Thomas tells me that he was next.
I, I, you know, feel like I'm rephrasing what I said about fifteen minutes ago. Ditto. You guys have got decisions to make. I want to give you every option that you can possibly pursue that's good for our residents and you think's good for the town. Absolutely would support that.
All right.
I want to make a motion. My motion is, the mud board would generally look favorably on a long-term lease or sale of land where the annex now sits.
Second.
You second, Kevin?
Yes.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Mayor? Garrett, does that answer your question?
All right. So for the council, do you want to direct the town manager to negotiate with the mud for both lease and purchase price or something like that on the land? What do you want to direct the town manager to do?
Do you think that's too premature?
I think you got to figure out what you want to do with this first.
Yeah, first.
You get the cart before the horse.
Yeah, what I'm hearing from these gentlemen is that they're ready to hear a proposal. So we got to get to a point to know whether or not there's a proposal we want to have. So.
We, we know it's an option now, so we can put it in our bullets-in-the-gun to shoot.
All right. Any action you want to take?
I don't think y'all need any action, do you?
All right.
You just wanted approval from us, and you got it.
Yeah, we, we just needed to know that if that was a direction we wanted to look at, that it was a viable direction. And by your concurrence just now, we can put that on the table and discuss it.
In other words, we are happy.
Yes.
All right. So without objection, I'll move on to item three. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the continuation of joint district-town information technology services, various systems upgrades, and associated costs for two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. This item has some supporting documentation, both in the packet and a IT services projection sheet that it looks like to me went through several revisions. The one that I think is last is dated July fifteenth. Oh, no. Two thousand and fourteen, which is one I saw today.
Oh, wait, no, never mind. Okay.
But I don't know if that's what everybody has.
And it's different from July.
I got it off the ledger five minutes before the meeting. It's not updated.
It is, but my understanding was that there was some conversation about the figures being presented by the mud and by the town being different. I think there was some effort on the part of Manager Sly and Manager McKnight to work out some of those issues. I don't know that they're all finalized. The bigger topic is the, the entities are faced with a decision of spending more money to improve its backup and restore capabilities of data from a technology standpoint. And there's some cost involved in that. And does the mud want to participate in that? And secondarily, how does that affect the, the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen agreement for services where IT services are shared expenses and how we deal with copiers, paper, all of that is dealt with appropriately? And in fact, any direction y'all might want to take for other services? So I think from our standpoint, from the town's standpoint, we're trying to figure out, how do we budget and what's the direction that we need there? Is that right? Fair enough statement? And there were maybe some questions about expenses. So I don't know if, Mike, do you want to take everybody through this one agreement? And I guess the question is, does members of the mud actually have this copy?
Yes, that's the one we do.
Real quick question, Nick. So this is specifically to focus on the, all the things you mentioned relative to the mud's participation in them and not in general?
Well, what do you mean in general?
Meaning if, if a question comes up about how we intend to do something or spend money, are we only talking about it relative to whether or not the mud is going to participate in what's already been proposed? Or are we actually talking about potential changes therein since we are in a joint meeting?
I think I may be able to answer your question if you'll allow me. Four or five weeks ago, Jennifer and I met because we, we were in the infancy stages of our budgeting cycle, and, and I wanted to let Jennifer know that based on the, the glitches in our computer systems that we've all experienced this summer related to backup and restoration abilities and that kind of thing, that we were going, that, that I was making a conscious effort to put resources upfront in the proposed FY fifteen budget to resolve that issue. And in doing so, I said, Jennifer, you have a backup, you're part of that backup provision as well. And I'm not sure what the mud wants to do. I would anticipate if you want to stay the way it is, that you would share in that cost or you may go out and do your own thing. I don't, I don't know what the mud's position is. And basically, we, we left that meeting and, and Jennifer, you might want to pick up from that point and tell the, tell everybody what's occurred up to this point and what your directors are faced with.
Sure, yeah. Okay. I met with Mike on June the tenth, and just as he explained, he stated that, you know, that, that the town, I guess the council had directed him and his staff to look at, you know, what would be necessary to correct the issues that we had with the backup last time. And he indicated that the town was working on those costs because, as he said, we were just kind of just starting our budgets. And he was going to let me know, you know, costs associated with that so that we could look at what is best for the mud on that. So the only way to really know what was best was to look at what the options are. And so I sent out a little mini proposal, and on June the eighteenth, I met with an IT firm. And then on June the twenty-third, I met with another IT firm. And after kind of going through their proposals and, and meeting and interviewing those individuals, we decided to go with a company called M Three, just to perform an assessment of the infrastructure that we have, kind of recommend the best method if we were to separate from the town, how that, how you would go about that. I know Nick, being that he's been on the board, knows this, and my board knows that I am not super IT person, so I didn't even really know where to begin to start to look at this. So it was very difficult to even verbalize to these people what exactly it was I was looking for. That's what I'm getting at. And, but, so we decided to just kind of look at if that were even possible, what would it, what would it take? And then recommend some sort of method to do so, and most importantly, to provide an estimate for what they thought it would cost to separate. Because to me, you had to look at what that cost was versus what the cost for any future upgrades and kind of continuing down the path with the town would be. So that was where I went with this. On June twenty-sixth, my staff and I met with Mike Pastor and had a very good meeting, and he agreed to kind of get us a good list of all the shared equipment and software together, and he did so. And we provided that over to the consultant so he could look at it as well. And then on July first, we had their engineer come in, and he met with Mike Pastor, and I was there. Mike will tell you, I pretty much didn't know what they were talking about, but they went through all the equipment and the V E M's and the V M I's and the V P's and the everything else that are in the... else that are in the back room, and, and what everything in the list was, and what the softwares were, and what, how many licenses we owned or, or paid for, and, and that sort of thing. And then the, the discussion became, okay, so now we've kind of identified what, who owns what. And it, in, pretty much, in, if you just look kind of in general, the Mud paid for fifty percent of all of the IT infrastructure. And that includes, other than like software licenses, where we only purchased the amount for our users. But we went through all of that, and in that meeting, that's when the methodology came up of, okay, if we were going to separate, what would be the easiest way for that to happen? And both Mike and the, the guy with M3 agreed that it would not be possible to kinda go, you know, this is yours, and this is mine, and this is yours, that it would be that one of the entities needed to keep what's existing, and the other entity buy out and, and move on to a, to a separate system. It also seemed to make sense that because the Mud, from what the engineer and M3 kinda calculated, we used somewhere about ten percent of the, the infrastructure, basically. So, it would be much more logical for the town to buy out the district's fifty percent. So, we met again, and we agreed that Mike Pastor would kinda work up a, an estimated buyout based on, you know, his knowledge of percent ownership and the age of the hardware, software, that sort of thing. And I also asked M3 to kinda propose a method for a buyout as well. And as you can see from the documents that we've provided, Mike came up with a estimated buyout amount. Mike Pastor came up with about eighty fi, or right at eighty-six thousand for the town to buy out the, the district's fifty percent ownership in the infrastructure.
Where does that show?
It's in the, um...
In your part, or in the summary?
It's in the spreadsheet, Town and Mud combined IT expenditures that Mike provided to y'all.
Fiscal year fifteen, blue and white.
Yeah.
Can I get, ask for a quick clarification? When you say the Mud uses ten percent of the infrastructure, what's the definition of infrastructure in that context? And maybe it's a question that Mike needs to answer, but I think it's important for everyone to understand the discussion.
Mike?
Step on up. Uh, I'm not sure I can answer the ten percent. That was what M3 came up with.
So, so in terms of, in, in terms of infrastructure that you guys discussed in the scope of this discussion, was any of it related to like the physical assets in terms of the presence, like network and, and copiers and printers or anything? Was this purely, so it included the network and, and phones?
The phones were not included, the AV equipment was not included, the access control to the buildings was not included, and the phone service itself, the, the local number itself was not included. I think that was...
We all agreed that those services would have to be, you know, remain split, because we can't split up who can come through the door, or something like that. So, it was just really the, what, servers and software, that sort of IT.
And, but, and the network?
Yes, the, the physical network and the line yards.
Thanks.
And what do you think that, that Mud is using? You said that was their estimate. What's your estimate? I don't really have an estimate. Based on our help desk workload, seventy percent goes to the town, thirty percent goes to the Mud. Just on, on an average, is the only thing I could provide with any real statistics behind it.
So, let me go back to my question. You mentioned an eighty-something thousand dollar figure. I'm trying to find it on this page.
In eighty-five?
Is that the eighty-five, four sixty-five, the very first number?
The one that's pink and, pink and blue?
Oh, there we go.
The one that Mike Sly provided?
Okay, I wasn't looking at that chart. That's the reason I couldn't find it. I got, all right, understand?
Mike, when you did, back in the early CMO talks, you did a analysis, pretty in-depth analysis, and I think you came up with like twenty-six, twenty-eight percent. Does that, you remember that?
Uh, somewhere, somewhere in that general vicinity.
Yeah, so that thirty percent would pretty much...
Somewhere around there, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Jennifer. I think you were in the middle of...
Sure. Well, anyway, so they, M3 recommended that the board start, you know, to negotiate, if, if this is something that the board wants to do, that they felt the buyout amount was closer to around a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So, because they looked at a depreciation amount. I didn't really wanna throw those numbers out there because I don't really know what a good buyout amount would be. I think it is probably somewhere between what each of these individuals found. But that's kind of the, the, what I guess Mike was looking at was a buyout amount. So, what I then went on to do is I kind of looked at a projection over the, you know, last two fiscal years, what we, what we've paid, and then kinda moving forward through 2017, what it would look like if we, if we split the services. As I started with, kind of one of the important pieces that I, I started out trying to look at is, what is the cost to upgrade the backup system going to be? Because one of the things that the board wants to look at is basically, do we continue to invest in a system if the town does indeed move away? And then we're gonna have to split the system, so it is now a better time to do that if, if we are gonna split the systems. But as of Friday, when I was getting all of my information kinda finalized, I did not have any kind of estimate from the town on the cost of those backups. So, I had talked to M3 about it, and they said, if, if, if they were going to do what they thought needed to be done, they would have estimated it at about twenty-five thousand dollars, and then it would be about six thousand dollars per year for ongoing backup costs or whatever, recurring costs for the system upgrades. So, I took that twenty-five and I split it by two, which came up to, you know, twelve thousand five hundred, and then added the, the, I'm sorry, they said about a thousand per month, so that was twelve thousand, so six thousand of that would've been the Mud's share. So, for the first year, I came up with the amount of adding eighteen thousand five hundred. So, if you're looking at this sheet, the one dated July eleventh, you'll, I ju, I'm just pointing out that those costs are just basically a guesstimate by a consultant that really didn't know what was gonna be needed. So, that's, that's the amounts that I came up with. And overall, it looks like the first year, this is not taking into account any sort of buyout for the infrastructure. This is just taking into account what, what the costs for the, to the Mud are. The first year, buying all-new infrastructure would be a loss to the Mud of about nineteen thousand dollars. But after that, it's over sixty thousand dollars a year in savings. And I think the big cost savings there is in the cost of the IT personnel services themselves, in that the outside company, they do all of the backup and everything routine, and their costs are, for a three-year contract, they proposed about forty-eight thousand a year. And right now, we pay about, for this fiscal year, it's, it's seventy-nine thousand is what we pay to the town for just the personnel services. Plus, there's also independent labor services that go with that for things like the videography, and of course, that will continue. But there's also times where the town IT uses outside consultants to assist when they run into problems that, you know, they need assistance with. But in the outside firm that we looked at, that's all included. We also pay a portion of training and mileage if the IT goes to some sort of class, so that, some of those, some of those costs are not even really included in here. But that is the way I kinda laid it out. Then today, when I saw the IT expenditure form that, or worksheet that the town had provided, I saw some discrepancies because, as I said, I was not told any cost for the backup last week. But they came up with a cost of, for us in this spreadsheet that they used, that the cost would only be fifty-six hundred. Talking with Mike, that's kind of the initial thought of, of what the assessment to, to determine what the upgrades would be. So, I took the spreadsheet and I reworked it, taking out those, that cost of eighteen-five and just putting in the fifty-six hundred. And it did increase the, it, it lowered the savings a lo, on the, the Mud side the next two years, and it increased the first year costs a little bit as well. But I still think that's an important piece that's missing on this, is do we invest going in the future or not invest going in the future? And we don't really know the answer to that right now. But I just kind of wanted to explain how I laid this out to everyone and what I was looking at with that. But overall, in the next couple of years, we could save over a hundred thousand dollars by separating out the system.
So, I have a question and three other people that have questions.
Okay.
So, first question I have was, not that I control your decision on this, but my assumption in your figures, and just correct me if I'm wrong, is that in essence, if you went your private contract method, that you wouldn't use any current staff for help desk support or any systems support?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so I just will make sure that's the correct assumption. Okay. And so I had, I have another question, but I have Greg Lamont, Philip Schaffner, Kevin Carr, Garrett Reed. Okay, so...
I guess just the big picture. What are the problems that you feel the need to separate?
I think that this started with the question of what is the cost to invest further to repair the backup system? That there, that there needs to be some sort of a, a fix to the backup system. And again, I don't know what those costs are just yet, so I don't know, but I think there were some issues with the backup, and that piece is what I thought we were working on getting worked out to get it upgraded for next year. And so maybe knowing that would, would make a difference. But we don't, right now, some of the services aren't very well-defined. They were much better defined in what the, what the consultant gave to us as far as, you know, routine backups, routine testing of the restoration, twenty-four-seven call-out, you know, those are the kinds of services that aren't real well-defined in what we have right now, and we pay more for it.
Well, how are we doing with backup? Are we instituting anything differently? Are we making a proposal to have a better safeguard? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but...
I'm trying to get that number together. We, we've gotta have a analysis of what we've got to determine what we wanna do going forward to be able to come back with a number. It, it's just a, a rough ballpark guesstimation. It could be anywhere in between. It depends upon how we define and what we want to define the recovery as.
Now, your billing is already separate on a separate computer, correct?
No, we are.
The Mud?
No, their own.
So, intermingled, it's not...
So, we're intermingled. So, you're gonna be separating all your billing and everything also?
Three questions, you're done.
Our, our STW is supposed to be on a separate server, correct?
It's a separate virtual server.
Right, it is separated.
But it's physically separated, and they, your shared drives are, are physically on a different sharepoint altogether.
So, nothing to do with this presentation?
That's for... Her cost, she's taken care of that.
Okay.
Which means capacity is freed up, and, and they're saying there's some residual value to that abandoned equipment, is what they're saying. Okay, Philip?
So, so you're, the three-year savings of the Mud, and tonight I'm money man, I guess, is, is eighty-one thousand four seventy-two. What's our three-year cost?
Well, in fact, I, I have a spreadsheet up here that looks at a, a, a more global picture. What is the impact to our citizens and customers of our tro, of Trophy Club? I, I don't discount the fact that if, if we were to separate, that there may be some cost savings to the Mud. But the costs that the town would incur in purchasing the hardware and software and the licensing, when you, when you, and I've got that spreadsheet up here, when you look at the out-years, it is a cost in fiscal year fifteen of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly, to, and most of that is one-time costs of purchasing the hardware and software that the Mud would abandon. And then moving forward, it's a cost to the citizens to the tune of forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand dollars a year that is represented by the savings that the Mud would, would enjoy, and the additional costs the town would incur, because we're no longer sharing IT services. We'll have two IT services. One was a contract, and the other is who we have here today. So, you know, it, when it's all said and done, the, the citizens lose. Citizens and customers lose, i, if, in that situation. The Mud enjoys the savings, but the additional costs incurred by the town, because we no longer share the services, share the cost of those services, basically more than offset the savings that the Mud would enjoy. If that makes sense. That's exactly what this spreadsheet would go through, and I'm, I'm happy to go through every single number if you want to. You know, and for the benefit of the, the audience and, and the folks who are watching online, let me just share with you, I, I use a term that I inherited when I got here, three and a half years ago, years ago, called CMO contract. And that's the Shared Employee, what did, what did that stand for? Shared Employee Maintenance or, or Management and Operations?
Shared Employee and Method of Operation.
Methods of Operation. It, it's a, it's an inter-local agreement that we have between the two organizations, and it used to be a lot of functions, HR and some various payroll and, and financial applications that have since gone their own way. And Mud now does that, and the town does ours, but IT has always been there. And it's, and it's been there because our networks are intermingled, as if we were one organization. And, and we have played with that CMO contract or, or the ILA for contract, for personnel contracts. Over time, it used to be a, a straight fifty-fifty split, and it, and rightfully so, it has become, we've been able to analyze what it is, the time performed by our IT staff in, for Mud functions and that kinda thing, so that it's no longer a fifty-fifty split of the total cost of IT. And it's much more representative of what the actual time is spent with the Mud. But in ca, in, in this case, you know, I, I can certainly appreciate that there's savings to the Mud, but when you look at it in, in total, it's a cost to our citizens.
Philip, anything else before I move on?
So, this spreadsheet, that's, that's new then? Cause this is different than the one...
No, I, I gave that to, to the council and to, to Jennifer, and I assumed she would've got it to the Mud directors. I gave that...
I guess I didn't get that?
I actually gave it to you yesterday and then amended it this morning.
Okay, so this morning's amendment is what?
And I, and I should say, that forty-seven and forty-eight thousand dollar number, it needs to be adjusted downward by about three thou, call it thirty-six hundred dollars, because in fact, the independent labor component that the Mud identified in the out-years in sixteen seventeen showed zero. If you look at Jennifer's spreadsheet, showed zero dollars. And, and that's the cost of videography and that kinda thing. I didn't realize that she had rolled it up in her contract number. So, I included it, knowing that we're gonna video our meetings in the future. So, we can reduce that forty-seven hundred or forty-eight, or forty-seven or forty-eight thousand number by about thirty-six hundred dollars. And that's, that's the, in, in, in the town's opinion, that, the staff's opinion, that is the impact to the citizens by separating IT services.
So, so they're, so they save fifty-five thousand...
So, so they're, so they save fifty-five thousand eight sixty in FY sixteen and we pay an additional forty-seven two eighty-six?
No, if you look up there, if you look up into the guts of that spreadsheet, it'll told you, it'll show you the total cost to the town, ninety-nine thousand eight forty-six.
Okay.
Versus the fifty-two thousand savings of the mud. You see that?
Oh, okay, that's their fifty, okay. That's the original total. Where are you getting that fifty?
And I'm, and I'm off by that three thousand dollars.
Okay, oh, okay, I see.
Right.
So once they save, then the additional cost to us is forty-seven thousand two eighty-six?
That's right.
Okay.
You with me?
I'm with you.
All right, so Kevin, next person.
First question for Jennifer is that hundred thousand or anywhere from eighty-six to one-twenty-one, did you offset this initial first year with that amount?
In my spreadsheet, no, I did not. That, I'm just showing, you know, I didn't use any kind of a buyout to, to see what the cost would look like overall.
Just say there's a buyout, say a hundred thousand, that number would drop automatically, which would be a savings, right?
Yes.
Okay, second question from Mike. We're talking about building a new town facility. What's going to happen then?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't suggest it for, for a second, that there may be a day that, that we might want to honestly consider that. I just don't think personally that now is the time.
At some time, the systems will be separate whenever a new building or whatever happens.
I don't agree with that.
And, and, and I can tell you that from where I came from, we had separate buildings and one network.
Right.
And if you've got the adequate infrastructure, you can continue to work with the same network.
Not, not using the current equipment that we have, it'd be all new equipment then?
No.
Or could we still use the cloud and things like that? Nick, you're the expert.
Well, my opinion is it doesn't matter where the location is, you can be in different states.
Right.
And be on the same network.
Okay. I didn't know if it took different.
It really doesn't matter if you've got the infrastructure to do it. Would there be some additional equipment if you had another building? Absolutely.
Yeah.
But we're talking networking equipment and not necessarily backend, we're talking about backbone stuff, so.
Okay, and then there was talk, I saw an email, I don't know, a few weeks ago about the spam filter, Barracuda or something like that?
Okay.
Is that in these numbers as far as the upgrade? Were we upgrading that or?
It's in the numbers, which you pay, it's just a yearly maintenance fee, six and some change per user per year.
Okay, so we didn't do that? Is that in the cost that you figured out?
If you didn't do it, is it in the cost?
If we, if the mud did not participate in it? It was twenty-something thousand from what I remember, is that right?
No, it's, it's next, the Barracuda is next to nothing. It's six, six dollars per, it's two hundred bucks.
Twenty-something thousand, was that the backup?
At the top of my head, I'm not sure what, twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah, I'll, I'll find the email and send it. There's something twenty-something thousand. On the backup, on the fifty-six hundred number, you said you have to do more research on that or?
Yes, there, there needs to be an assessment to figure out exactly how we define the importance of data, to figure out how we need to back it up and what methodology we need to use.
And really, that's, that is the cost of that assessment. We don't know what the cost of that backup will be because we're going to have it, have the entire network assessed. The total cost for the assessment is fourteen thousand. We did a, what, a sixty-forty split on that?
Yes, the, but the assessment, because I don't have the number yet from the, from the service, I, I, it, it's nothing more than a placeholder.
Yeah, so the fifty-six hundred that's in here is just a number on a piece of paper?
More or less, unfortunately. And until we figure out, you know.
No backup, that is repetitive on backup a day or anything.
Yeah.
There's no backup on this fifty-six hundred.
Until, until we figure out if, if we're, if we're going together or not going together, then that'll determine the outcome of how they do the assessment and potentially the price of the assessment because it's continuing more work.
And how much was the assessment again, fourteen thousand?
We're guessing fourteen, but we don't know for sure yet because I, I don't have that number for it.
Hundred dollar backup?
No, fifty-six hundred is the portion of the fourteen thousand.
Yes, it's at a sixty-forty split.
Forty percent of the fourteen thousand, correct, which they.
And the biggest problem is you, you mentioned that we split the time thirty, you know, seventy or whatever it comes to, but every bill that comes in, and I may be wrong, but what I see, it's fifty-fifty.
I can tell you that, I mean, Jennifer and I both inherited what we're looking at today. And, and I, I don't argue the fact that some of these bills that you get are fifty-fifty. In fact, I think some of the software licenses, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike Pastor, some of the software licenses, Office, you know, Microsoft Office or pick a software, is split fifty-fifty. And, and it's not done that way. I don't disagree that.
It's not done that way anymore. Most of their licenses over the past two years have been more accurate to what the actual use is versus before.
So as we find those that are fifty-fifty that doesn't make sense, we change them. We, we, we're not, we're, we're not trying to scalp the mud or have the mud subsidize our IT infrastructure or our costs. But over time, I mean, in, several years ago, everything was just done fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, we're an entity just like you, we have budgets to, you know, live by. We try and save our, you know, customers' money, just like you sa, save the residents' money. Yeah, there is overlap between the two. And that's the reasoning, you know, we did the HR, we did, you know, we have other things that we split. And we've come to find out that we've saved a lot of money what we were paying before. Now, what, could that have been saved before? Like, okay, you paid twenty percent and, or thirty or forty, whatever it been, I don't know. But I, I know for a fact, as far as the numbers, we have saved a lot of money from what we were paying before. I mean, when the CMO started, it was two-hundred and thirty-something thousand, two-twenty-eight, I think it was.
I think we slashed that almost in half the first year I was here. I, I agree, it was, it was overstated.
Right. Okay.
Garrett?
I've got a hopefully relatively quick question. It's a financial question. On the buyout number, maybe you can answer this. It's been my experience, and maybe you can clarify this, that with technology, which you can see how much I use technology, it's either written off or determined invaluable the moment you buy it or there's a very quick depreciation schedule. So I was just curious, with the hundred thousand plus number, is there really, from a financial standpoint, I mean, if we were a business on the books, would there be any value to that equipment at all, really? Okay, that's, so it's really basically once you buy equipment like that.
I think the equipment, you're right. I think that the licenses might be different because.
Yeah, no, I was specific.
You need the right to use that software.
Right. So I think I got through the list of everybody raised their hand, so I would just make a comment. It seems to me, and Ryland, you can chime in on this if you want to, that we probably have the expertise on the council to evaluate your backup strategy and come up with a solution for you and you not spend fourteen thousand dollars. I may be wrong, but.
I would agree wholeheartedly, yeah.
I was really dependent on you, Ryland.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was surprised when I heard that, actually. I, I had assumed that that was a, actually a proposal for whatever the solution was going to be back when we had first heard about that.
Well, I don't know where you are in that conversation with them, but just from my standpoint and from Ryland's standpoint, maybe we ought to look at that slightly differently. All right, I, I think where we are, part of this conversation is there because we were looking at buying more equipment. So that was part of the motivation, I think. But, but the bigger issue is how do we handle next year's budget? Because if the CMO figure goes away, eighty thousand dollars needs to be increased as an expense or no income for eighty thousand dollars to the town. And obviously, then there's some aspect of what y'all, what the mud needs to do to deal with that. I don't doubt personally that going to a hosted environment in the cloud for services is a better long-term approach for both the mud and the town. Just me personally, I think I said that a long time ago. So investing in more hardware is not necessarily where I would like to go personally. If I was providing services like this other company was, if I was using them for our services, we wouldn't be worrying about the backup strategy, it would become their problem. However, backup and restore, if you've never really dealt with that, is extremely complicated. Example, in your STW software, using Microsoft SQL Server, depending on where the checkpoint restarts are done for backups and the roll-forward capability, it is a nightmare. And just because you have a backup doesn't mean you're going to get backup easily. And I read in their literature that says you're going to be back up almost instantaneously. Well, I think they're talking about the operating system on a virtual server.
Well, I would like to say that I'm not an IT person, but I do disagree that it's not possible to get backup and running very quickly. I, after Hurricane Ike, I had a tape in my vehicle with me. I followed my IT guy's instructions of what to go, to Best Buy to buy, went to someone's office, hooked it up. He told me step-by-step what to do and I had my whole system operating again. And he had, he came out quite regularly and tested to make sure. And that's what the big concern is, is if there is some catastrophic failure of this system and we lose customer data, that's a big issue. That's a huge issue for, for a utility district.
Here's, let me just say it to you this way. If you have a backup that was made at midnight last night and you processed a thousand billing transactions after midnight and then the failure happened, how do you recover the thousand transactions?
I agree with that.
Okay, so that's my point.
Right.
Just because you have a tape, unless it was at the point at which you need to restore, doesn't solve the problem. And, and I don't want to under-simplify that that is a very complicated issue. Sometimes you're lucky, but a lot of times you're not that lucky.
Sure.
And depending on the system is, and how online it is and how instantaneous it is, will have a big effect on that. The problem we experienced, as I understand it from talking to Mike, was not necessarily that backup didn't work. There were backup copies. Unfortunately, there was a damaged part of the backup that continued to back up and trying to restore, it couldn't restore over it. Mistake probably made was, we didn't test the restore and find the problem long before we failed. And I, you know, I took my company totally to the cloud a year ago, eleven months ago, really, thought that it was going to be perfect. And two months ago, they were going to test on the weekend a restore to make sure that everything they said worked, worked, and it failed. I had three hundred customers down for three days. So, you know, was I very happy with that service? No. I was one of six hundred and eighty-seven clients for that company. We all were pretty darn upset. So since that time, they supposedly have guaranteed us that won't happen again. But I take precautions that it will happen again.
Yeah, and one thing that I would like for all of you guys to know, since Jennifer, since you brought it up, is we've discussed in our council retreat and in our, just briefing with Mike when he briefed the council with, for the incoming members, and Mike and I have also talked personally. One of the things we intend to do is to have fully documented disaster recovery procedures, which include periodic testing for any systems, applications that are considered mission-critical. Email, obviously, is the most broad-reaching mission-critical thing because it, it's what everyone does workout of, and obviously there are others. So I would, I would encourage you all that if you have any other concerns to make sure they're known. I know Mike is gonna, is gonna be looking at that. Obviously, this is a, a learning experience for everyone and no one is immune to it. I have worse stories like Nick, but they're long and boring, so I won't share them. But just generally speaking, I, I would agree with your sentiment that there, that this had, that that portion needs to be addressed if, if we want to continue to conserve, to continue to serve you guys, because we need to do it internally as well.
All right, so what I'm, I encourage us to do is, the item was placed on the agenda for our purpose to try to figure out where do we go from here on budgeting. I don't know that there is a decision that the town is going to make. There might be a decision that y'all want to make, you may not want to make it tonight. But where we are, at least from working together for the citizens, is both of us need to decide how we're going to budget. So direction has to be given for us to plan for that, no matter what we do, so. But I don't, Mike, I don't see a decision we have to make at this point, do you? All right.
Yes, sir.
So I'll turn the meeting over to Director Moffsey if you want to do anything.
Any discussion on our part?
No, I just think.
Make a motion?
I just think it needs to be put on a future agenda for the mud.
Okay. There is no action on our part. Oops, sorry.
This is additional comment. I mean, if we're talking budget, when are we going to have, you know, A, there's missing information. I like the fact that Ryland's been delegated to handle this task, but I better watch it. He's going to be delegating a lot. And, but do we have a date certain? I mean, we, we have to deal with our budget, you have to deal with your budget. I mean, I would assume that, can we have some firm numbers on whether it's fifty-six hundred or whatever? I'm just kind of looking ahead and you have a, a meeting on the twenty-sixth of August. You know, could we have certain answers by that deadline back to the mud? I mean, that still gives us time to adjust in September on our budgets, but I mean, bottom line is, I'd like to know what the real costs are so we can make a reasonable decision on what to do ahead and also give both bodies here enough time if they have to make a budget decision on how to deal with it.
Appropriate suggestion, Neil. Thank you. I think we all want that. And I don't see why we can't come up with a better number by that second meeting in August. We do have two meetings in August, so we'll see if we can get it prior to that because it affects us just like it affects you. Mike?
I would only make the point to the council that under our charter, I have a dictate to submit a proposed budget to the council by July thirty, or July thirty-first. Not knowing whether the mud is going to go on their own or participate in our shared employee IT services certainly has a, you know, an eighty-two, potentially an eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollar impact on that budget. And we're, you know, we're talking about more than a half a penny on the tax rate. So that is a huge impact to us. And I can make, I can submit a budget to the council and make a, an assumption one way or the other, as long as you're, you understand that, you know, in August or whenever the mud makes that decision, it may have a dramatic impact on our budgeting process.
So Neil, you were asking, can we get some data by the second meeting? When do you think the mud board can make a decision? Just plug a figure in and make a decision.
As a, as a, as a member of the board, I'm, I'm saying I would like that. That would be more the call of the president. But I mean, I would, I would expect that sometime in August, we could have some feedback and.
We have a budget meeting set up, don't we?
On the sixth.
Yeah, so while, as we have that num, your valid numbers by the first of August, we'll consider it at the August sixth meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Ryland?
So we'll, we'll deal with our issue appropriately with.
And is the only number everybody's concerned about is the cost to improve the existing backup and restoration system? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I would just go through the whole.
Yeah, I would need the whole amount of the, of the IT budget, but I think Mike has already provided that, haven't you, to Terry?
Yes.
Yeah, so the IT, I mean, it would be that plus the additional cost. I think we have that, the, the cost. I did want to ask a question, that just reminded me of something. How did you have on your spreadsheet, the, in FY fifteen, it shows the town cost of three ninety-five and then in sixteen and seventeen, it's lower than that? It's like three sixty and three sixty-four. So it actually reduces thirty thousand over the next couple of years. And I, I meant to ask how that was done.
Good question. I asked the same question to the finance director and he's going to give you the answer.
But anyway, I guess back to this, that we, I think we have everything else we need for the budget, but that. But anyway, that, I guess back to this, that we, I think we have everything else we need for the budget, but that.
He's trying to answer.
Oh, sorry.
We have a few supplemental items in there for this year's budget. One of his, one of them is an Adobe upgrade, uh, he has the fourteen thousand dollars in there for, thanks, for the, um, backup, uh, um, consult, consultation, and then you have a couple other things in there also, uh, as supplemental. Uh, he has a, a backup for the police department, um, and I, I think that's probably it, is that right?
Two other police-specific topics.
So, those are one-time costs that we would incur.
Okay. That's not a true picture, then, as far as the savings, you have that cost no matter what?
Well, it's a decision that the council's gonna make, whether or not they wanna fund it. I've got it included in the proposed budget right now. They may choose not to fund it.
Okay, well, um-
They're supplemental items to the base budget.
Doesn't it show at the bottom line, where you say, well, the savings and the cost would be X amount? And then, you know, MUD, so really, we wouldn't be, you'd have that cost anyway, so that's not a, a loss or say, an extra, an additional cost with us or without us?
So, you, uh, to your point, it, it would, it would affect the bottom line. So, take thirty thousand dollars off of it, it's still a hundred grand.
So, now, now at thirty-three, thirty-three thousand, we're getting there.
All right, any more discussion about this item? Appreciate all the input by everybody. All right.
I have a question, if you don't mind? So, I'm supposed to get with Ryland and Nick, and we're supposed to discuss shortly?
Real shortly?
Yeah, I think so. If-
Okay.
I'll just, you know what, we'll just, we'll just have to have a conversation soon after.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I don't wanna bog it down, trying to give you direction now or anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, item number four, twenty-fourteen dash twelve eighty-eight T, set future joint meeting dates. Um, uh, there are calendars that were attached, do, what is your preference, directors and council for setting a date? You wanna set a date now, or do you wanna set a general timeframe? What had been talked about was that maybe we alternate between regular meeting days. This was a MUD meeting day, and we held it on that day. Next time, maybe we do a council meeting day and the MUD comes to that. Is that agreeable?
Do you wanna do something after the budget, like in October, or is-
Is that agreeable?
Yep.
Our sched- our scheduled meetings for October is the thirteenth and twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, fourteen, I'm still on Mondays. Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
So, do you have a preference, anybody? October fourteenth or twenty-eighth?
Not the twenty-eighth.
So, it sounds like the fourteenth.
Okay, October fourteenth will be our target date for our next joint meeting. Um, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, can I say something first? Um-
Yes, you may.
I appreciate you working with us and coming together and letting us crash your meeting. Um, I, I think that this is a start of, you know, on that little strategic map back there, we have, one of our goals is to work, forge collaborative relationships with other government entities. And seeing as we both share the title of Trophy Club, Trophy Club Council, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District, I think that that's a good starting point. And the Blue Ribbon Panel of both PID and MUD, uh, citizens said that citizens expect that its governing bodies will work together for the benefit of all. And so, I, I think that these are great, that we're coming together, that we're working together. And I appreciate you, uh, taking the time and letting us come, you know, crash your meeting and, and you're willing to come to our meeting. I, I think that this is a start of a, a good working relationship. And with that, I'll go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I, I agree, and I think this is very civil. Uh, the mayor ran an excellent meeting, everyone had a voice to speak, and everyone, uh, respected each other's opinion, so.
Do you wanna say something, or are you gonna make a motion?
I would like to say something. My stomach in as I do this. I, I, I had an operation that, that came out wrong, didn't it?
It did, but that's all right.
Uh, I'd like to see we reinstitute liaisons between the MUD and the town, and the town and the MUD. Uh, this way, if we have problems, or we, we see something, or we hear something, we run it through a liaison, and they can go back to their respective municipalities and, and straighten it out before anything gets on Facebook, or we, we start sending out emails. It's just, I know it's not, we don't have future agenda items, but it's just a comment I'd, I'd like to see each body, uh, look at.
And I make a motion to adjourn.
I think he was gonna say something.
All suckers.
I actually, a friend of mine texted me, let, I just wanna let you know, Jeter was two to two, uh, tonight, so, uh-
They, they might've grooved them in, by the way.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
He's a big Yankee fan, he just wanted to let me know.
I have a second, the council member Schaffner moved, all in favor, council, raise your hand. Uh, we are adjourned, Director Moss?
Municipal Utility District Number One is now adjourned at nine seventeen.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.